Good evening.
Good evening.
We'll start the meeting while selectmen are present. And we'll start by transmitting Treasury Warrants thirty-seven, thirty-seven A, thirty-eight, and thirty-eight A.
Motion so moved.
Second.
Motion made, second all in favor. Shenanigans. We have no meeting minutes to approve, so we'll start with our seven o'clock appointment with Jeffrey M. Hall, Assistant Town Manager for the recommendations relative to the proposed change in employee dental insurance plan. Good evening, Mr. Hall.
Good evening. You have before you this evening a memorandum which I prepared regarding dental insurance. Periodically, we go through a process of soliciting alternative proposals on some of our benefits, in this particular case dental. The plan is offered to employees on a voluntary basis, so the employee pays one hundred percent of the cost. In this particular case, we looked at some alternative proposals to Delta Dental, which is what we're currently offering employees. Came up with a short list of plans which included Altus, which is essentially Delta Dental of Rhode Island, the Delta Plan that we have now, as well as Blue Cross. And the, as part of the process, under the general laws, Chapter thirty-two B, which deals with benefits in health insurance, were required to advise a group known as the Insurance Advisory Committee of any changes that we're contemplating and give them an opportunity to hear about the proposal and to make a recommendation. The Insurance Advisory Committee is made up of seven representatives of the largest unions in town, in addition to one retiree. So back on March seventh, we presented this proposal to the Insurance Advisory Committee, went through the benefits. Essentially, the plan is very similar, the Blue Cross Plan, that is, to the Delta Dental Plan. Both plans have a $1,000 maximum coverage per individual per policy year. Essentially, the difference is that the Blue Cross Plan is slightly cheaper for employees. For a individual who might get coverage through the plan, it's $45.47 a month. For a family, it's $116.40. That compares with the Delta Plan, which is $48 for an individual and $123 for a family. Also, the coverages are slightly enhanced under the Blue Cross Plan if the dentist is in-network. Both of these plans are PPOs, which is a preferred provider organization. So the dentists, there are some dentists that will be in the network, some dentists that will be out of the network. In the case of the Blue Cross Plan, if the dentists are in the network, some of the coverages are slightly enhanced. So based upon the discussion with the Insurance Advisory Committee, they recommended, in the majority, that the town adopt this change from Delta Dental to Blue Cross. Again, under the general laws, the requirement is that the, what is termed the appropriate public authority, make the final decision. In towns, the appropriate public authority is the Board of Selectmen. So that's really what brings me here this evening. Entertain any questions?
Thank you. Any questions, comments, or a motion from the board?
Actually, one, possibly two questions. First one is, what happens if the employee doesn't use the $1,000 in this particular case?
Okay, the benefit is $1,000 per calendar year. They have, both the Delta Plan and the Blue Cross Plan have what they refer to as a rollover provision. The subscriber has to use the plan at least once a year, but if they use it once or more and the total amount of the benefit does not exceed $500, then they can carry over 350 into the next year. So conceivably, if someone had dental bills that were less than 500 in a given policy year, they could carry 350 forward, so the next policy year, they would have $1,350. And that could accumulate up to another $1,000. So conceivably, the maximum rollover would be $1,000. So in a given policy year, you might have your initial $1,000 limit plus a rollover of 1,000 for $2,000.
Okay, so that benefit stays with the employees?
Right. You can accrue it from year to year.
All right, that's all I have then. Thanks. Gentlemen?
Sounds like you want to save up your root canals for three years going forward.
If you can.
So it seems to me, sorry to interrupt you here, that the employees pay the full amount of the premium. So this is a service that, in researching these best options here, we're just looking for ways to save the employees some money without detracting any care, any coverage.
Right. Essentially, the benefit, and we offer this benefit and other benefits to employees. Typically, they come out of a bargaining process where the town is looking to essentially add value, so to speak, and look at alternatives other than simply increasing compensation. So this was, in fact, one of those benefits that came out of a collective bargaining process. So the benefit to the employee is that because the town essentially is the conduit for providing dental insurance, they can get the insurance cheaper than if they were to purchase it on their own.
Sure. Sure. And I see also, I think on page two here, maybe you alluded to it, but I didn't catch it, that a number of the union organizations in town have effectively approved this move if we were to take it. So that's, I just wanted to draw those things to, I guess, our attention, and I have no further questions. I'd be in favor. Thanks for doing the work.
Any other comments, Tom Edgerton?
No, I'm all set. Thank you.
Motion?
Do you need a motion, Jeff?
I'm sorry?
Are you looking for a motion to proceed with this change?
Yes.
Then I move that the board accept the recommendation of the Assistant Town Manager relative to the proposed change in employee dental insurance plan.
A second now, please.
Do you have a motion made, and second? All in favor?
Four in favor. I'm going to abstain.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Our seven fifteen appointment is for the Board of Selectmen to discuss the Town Manager's selection process. As I stated at a previous meeting, I am going to ask the immediate past chairman to chair this section of the meeting, and I'm going to abstain from any of this process. It's the new house, if you will.
Thank you, Mrs. Smaglia. Members of the board, we had agreed at the last meeting that we would put an agenda item for discussion relative to the Town Manager's selection process, and I just wanted to know what the input of the board is, and we'll go from there.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd just like to say a few words. This is no difference of an opinion. I've been on the board for a period of time, between planning board and being on the Board of Selectmen, going on twenty-five years, and I've been involved in the town for a while. And what I'm about to say is no different than what I said a year ago when I was up for reelection. Members of the press, the Lowell Sun, and the Town Crier asked me my thoughts on the manager, and I did state it back then, a year ago, that I think when the time comes, we should probably consider Jeff, the Assistant Town Manager, as the new town manager. I know there was an editorial in the Lowell Sun stating that we should do a nationwide search, and I understand, you know, some members and some individuals stated that maybe we should do a nationwide search, but being involved in town government for a long time, I think I have a pretty good handle on what I'm doing. And I'm a firm believer of, and I'm just putting my two cents in right now where I'm going with this, I'm a firm believer that you should be promoting within. If you have an organization or a company that's not up to par, then obviously you'd look on the outside. And what I'm saying is no different than what I said a year ago. And let's say we did take that route to do a nationwide search. Probably costs us $30,000, $40,000, but say we did do that. I think at the end of the day, and I'm telling you right now, I think I would, I'd not think I would. I would show support for Jeff Hall appointing him as the town manager. Simply put, Jeff Hall's been Assistant Town Manager, I think, longer than Mike Kyra, our present town manager, has been manager. I was on the board when Jeff was the Assistant Town Manager in the eighties. And, you know, I look at it like this. I mean, how else can you put it? I'll put it in a, for example, like the New England Patriots. You've got Coach Belichick, been with that team for a long time, and he's done an outstanding job, and I'm looking at Mike Kyra doing an outstanding job. One day, Coach Belichick is going to retire. I would think, if I was Bob Kraft, I would think I would want to probably maintain his assistant, knowing that he's worked with Belichick for all these years. I don't know how else I can put it, instead of me trying to hire a coach on the West Coast at Miami or somebody like that. I like promoting within, and I think there's an asset to that. And I think Jeff has done a good job. And I just put my two cents in, Mr. Chairman. I know I'm just one member, and I'm obviously interested in hearing from the full entire membership, but what I'm saying is no different than I said a year ago. And I appreciate the opportunity to comment on it, and I would like to maybe make another comment later. But that's where I'm coming from, and like I said, whatever the board decides to do, not a problem.
Yeah, I agree with everything that you've said, and I guess, at the risk of repeating some of what you said, I also look at, I was writing down, taking notes, some of the points that you made. The points that you made that I agree with is that we have an Assistant Town Manager who's been here for over twenty years, and, you know, certainly, the Town Manager, I think rightfully should take credit for a lot that's gone well with this town. I like to think the Board of Selectmen has a piece of that success, and certainly the entire management team, I think, has, you know, some ownership in that success. So I think that the track record of the administration in general with Jeff's position as the Assistant Town Manager really indicates that the team works and that he, you know, he has to be doing something right. I also agree with your point about hiring within. I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, good. I'm sorry.
And also, I think you touched on it, but it's important for me to say this. I made this statement at a public hearing last week when somebody asked me my position on this, and I said that I believe we have the right person who's right here in Wilmington right now, happens to be Jeff Hall, the Assistant Town Manager. For me to, really to talk about any process that might involve, you know, the nationwide search and that kind of a process, for me, would be disingenuous. For somebody else, not necessarily so, but for me, I already believe in my heart of hearts that we could open this position up to anybody and everybody, and we could use whatever search process this board sees fit. At the end of the day, I can't imagine that I'm going to select anybody over the Assistant Town Manager who's shown a dedication and commitment to the town for the last twenty-odd years and who's proven himself to be more than capable. So, you know, I understand that the idea of having a search process, but I think when you're convinced that you have the right person there, for me personally, to endorse any other process would be disingenuous. It'd be going through a dog and pony show that, you know, from my perspective, I don't need to go through. So I also look at Wilmington in the unique situation in which we find ourselves, not the least of which is, you know, an $80 million capital improvement project with the high school. You know, Jeff has certainly been an integral part of that. And, you know, from the procurement side of things to the, to the high school building committee, you know, all of these committees that look to him specifically for assistance, you know, I think this is an important time. And I also live in a, you know, in a world where I try and be practical, and I know you've made similar comments in the past, you know, being a realist. And the reality is that if I were in Mr. Hall's position and I were passed over for the position of Town Manager, as much as I, you know, have been committed to the town, I would think I might have to look elsewhere, you know? And certainly, there are plenty of towns out there, and I'm not always paying attention to which towns are looking for administrators or managers, but, I mean, you don't have to look too far to know that Wilmington's going through changes, Bill Ricker, Philly recently went through changes, Belmont, North Reading. So, you know, you don't have to look too far to know that people are on the move. And I think that, given this time in particular, this would not be a great time to be trying to fill both the manager's position and an assistant manager's position with capable people. So I know that that repeats much of what you said, but I think it bears repeating, and that people should understand where individual selectmen are coming from. Thoughts down here?
Me and you.
Always a pleasure to let you be first, sir.
I'll be brief, because everything that I, knowing that this was on our agenda for this evening, I really, I have been for, geez, for the better part of a year since Mr. Kyra made it known to us that he was going to be leaving us, I've been mulling over what the process would be or what my position would be. But I finally took the time to really put down on paper sort of some pros and cons or some bullet points as to what, how to articulate my position. And, you know, I'll even show, there's a whole bunch of bullets on one side and not very many on the other, and the bullets really represent everything you just said. I'll be briefly. I won't go through the whole thing, but representing consistency and continuity. Mr. Hall has been, as we, has been said, twenty-five or so years, a part of this system that has shown itself to be a successfully-run system. And by virtue of that, I feel like we can count on Mr. Hall, if he were to be hired for that position, to continue to operate in a consistent manner that has been successful. He obviously has demonstrated skills. I've gone to a few of these Mass Municipal Association annual conferences and had occasion to spend some time with Jeff at various breakout sessions or whatever. I can tell you, as an outsider or as an observer looking in, that he is perceived by his peers and his colleagues at similar level or even at Mr. Kyra's level at other communities. He is perceived as a thought leader, as an expert in the field of municipal health insurance, especially, but in all aspects of municipal operations. His colleagues view him as expert, and that speaks loudly to me when I, when we get into conversations and that people will say, "Oh, you've got a good guy in Jeff." So that says an awful lot to me. What also speaks very loudly to me is that Mr. Kyra has made it clear over the past several months that he feels very strongly that Jeff is a good candidate. Given the way that the community has been run under Mr. Kyra's able hands for so long, I take very, very close to heart any recommendations or advice that Mr. Kyra gives on hosts of issues, and most especially this one. They work hand in hand for decades, so I certainly value that recommendation. Mike, I echo what you said about, I wouldn't blame Jeff, frankly, if we were to pass him over. You know, I don't want to give him any ideas here, but I think he would certainly be looking to explore his other options, and then we would be in a situation where we'd have to potentially spend a lot of money to get two people up to speed, to do a two-person search at a time when we have a number of really big projects on the radar screen where we do want to maintain consistency and steady progress. Most importantly, visibly, the high school. We also have things going on with Yentile, Olin, et cetera. We want to reduce transition gaps, be pragmatic and practical. The only reason I could think of that we might want to engage in some type of a regional or national search was politics, to give the impression to the residents that we want to cast out some net to try to, even though we already have a fish in the boat, we want to cast out a net to see if we can get a bigger fish, which to me seems illogical. I can't justify, in my mind, going through that exercise, both from a time standpoint as well as a cost standpoint, and a potential cost standpoint if we were to lose Jeff. So, you know, really, to me, it seems like we would be potentially just trying to appease some small segment of the population that feels it's important for us to cast out this net. And I feel like we represent, I feel like I represent, by virtue of sitting here, the entire population, and I have to consider what move is the right move to make for the widest population, for the majority. And I'm glad to hear you, my colleagues, so far saying or articulating your positions that mirror mine. I believe that we'd be making the right move by encouraging Mr. Hall to take the job, and I hope that we can find a way to negotiate a mutually beneficial contract for him, and then we can set our minds towards finding an Assistant Town Manager. So that's all I really had to say, and I hope I didn't steal all your bullets, too.
Well, I appreciate that. So certainly, as the last member to speak, I'm certainly the newest member, and just to pick up where Mr. McCoy had started off, obviously, last year, I was involved in campaigning for this position. And in doing so, I did speak to the residents in a public format, especially in the Town Crier, about a plausible proposal as to how we would move forward with seeking a new town manager. And in doing so, that was primarily to share with the residents that I had some prethought and some vision towards, if I were elected, how I would go about managing an assignment such as this as a new member of the Board of Selectmen. In doing so, there was no candidate in mind, there was no process that had already been unveiled, and quite frankly, it was just in the beginning phases of Mr. Kyra making an announcement that he was planning to retire. So I want to be very clear that that was very process-oriented, and certainly after, fast-forwarding a year later, I have had the good fortune of working alongside the other members of the Board of Selectmen, as well as working very closely with the Town Manager and the Assistant Town Manager and the other members of the leadership team throughout Town Hall and the various department heads. And I can tell you, in the most genuine sense, that it has been an extremely positive experience, and everyone on this board and in this Town Hall has gone above and beyond to welcome me as the newest selectman, and certainly Jeff Hall is one of those people. So certainly, the sentiments have been made by all of my fellow selectmen's, and I certainly, as a former math teacher, have the ability to count. We've already passed through three sets of comments. So I merely want to not belabor the discussions here and reiterate everything, but I certainly want to say wholeheartedly that I support the other comments that have been made. Obviously, respect is due to the gentleman to my right, who can certainly speak for himself, Mr. Kyra. But in doing some research throughout the past year, and knowing that tonight we were preparing for comments, I did take it upon myself to talk to various residents, to think about this myself from a process perspective, and also, quite frankly, to talk to the Town Manager himself. And certainly, at a more appropriate time, I would like to have him have the opportunity to represent himself. But certainly, all of the comments that I have received have been very favorable in seeing that this town, which has been named a most affordable suburb, continues to be progressive, dynamic, and continuing to move up and to the right, and to see that all of our residents, from a newborn to a senior person and beyond, have every service available to them and have every opportunity to live in a special community, which Wilmington certainly is. And Jeff Hall is a big part of that. He's been here for twenty-five years, and my personal belief and my professional belief is that when a person does a superior-quality job, is imminently qualified, has human personal qualities as well as professional qualities that warrant the opportunity to be promoted, certainly, I believe that any manager or any body that has the authority to make that decision should recognize that and give them the first opportunity to continue their success, especially in a town of Wilmington. To Mr. Newhouse's point, if Mr. Hall was not to consider this position, that other towns and communities may seek him to move forward in their direction, why wouldn't they? Certainly, he has proven to be a very valuable asset to this town, and certainly, I think that we would be not structuring ourselves to continue the optimal success level that we've been enjoying here in the town if we didn't seriously take a look at putting Jeff or asking him if he would be interested in working in that capacity. So we have a lot of big, major projects coming forward. We're enjoying the benefits of all the hard work that Jeff has been a part of, and I certainly, as the newest selectman, would want to support that. So I think my position is clear, and the only question that I would have for the chairman is that with all of these comments being made, if you could, you know, move forward with discussing, where do we go from here and how do we move forward with next steps?
Well, it is clear to me, as I sit here and listen to the comments that have been made, that everybody at this table believes that Jeff ought to be given every consideration for the position, I guess. I have, as I'm sitting here, I'm thinking about, I have been so convinced that he's interested in the job that I'm sure I've ever, I don't think I've ever asked him. So obviously, I think we need to reach out to him to indicate that we've had a discussion about this, that the board has unanimously indicated that it's, you know, interested in giving him consideration for the position. Let's confirm his interest, and let's hear from him as to where he thinks we can go from here, both in terms of, you know, how we move this process forward, if, you know, everybody's mindset continues to be as it is tonight, how we move this process forward, and how, you know, getting his input on what the transition ought to involve. And I think, as with any new appointment, as with any new hire, you look to the candidate to determine how we move forward in the big picture, not just relative to the appointment. So I would think we should have that discussion with Jeff, and at some point, that discussion should be public and open.
Well, that was, that is, that was the question, sorry, Mike. That was the question I was going to have, is how much of that going forward? At what point do we go to executive session and have conversation? I guess only when we're talking contract?
Right, yeah. I would say the open meeting, or a exception, would be with respect to, you know, contract negotiations with non-union personnel. So I think that we ought to indicate to Jeff the nature of the discussion tonight and invite him before the board at a future meeting, presumably the next one, as long as that works.
I was just going to say that, Mr. Chairman, as you are acting chairman relative to the appointment of the Town Manager, I want you just to reach out to Jeff, and I'm sure Jeff's going to show an interest, I would imagine so, and then you could get back to us, set up another agenda item, and we can have another discussion. And while we're talking about it, you know, the taxpayers who truly foot the bill in this community realize that we don't have user fees. There's no bus fee. There's no sports fee. Kids play the band for free. You know, there's a lot of things going on in this town, and why wouldn't you want to continue on with that? You know, and I think people would say, "It makes sense. Why do you want to jump ship and hire somebody else?" While the trains keep, the trains keep on rolling, it's going great, and it just makes no sense. I mean, who's to say what happens down the road relative to Jeff, but for the time being, I think that's the direction we need to go, and I think people realize that. And we're giving a great bank for the buck to these residents in the town. They're just paying their tax bill, that's it. No user fees. There's, I don't even think a community in the Merrimack Valley area that can compare to what we do. And it's good management from the Town Manager. You know, we're blessed to have a strong industrial base, but you need to manage that. And the Town Manager has always taken a good conservative approach, direction from the board and himself. Why do you want to change? But I think that's the good point, Mr. Chairman, and I think if you reach out and talk to him and get back to us, and you set the agendas.
I will do that. And before I do want to go to the audience cases, any questions or comments? Before we do that, any other comments up here?
I'm going to just go, even take it one step further. If things were, if we found ourselves with difficult times as a community, if we were in dire straits, if we were looking at pink slips, if we were looking at, you know, reducing sizes of departments or reducing level of services that we were providing, or increasing fees, or if we were in that kind of a situation, then we could potentially start thinking in terms of, "Well, we've got to mix it up. We've got to change direction. Something's, you know, we're on the wrong track." But to your point, Mr. McCoy, we have been shown over the course of the last several years to be on the right track. So, you know, I hate to use the euphemism, but if it ain't broke, I don't think we should be going to look around to fix it. There's always room for improvement in any organization, private or public. You always look for what can you be doing better? But I don't think we need to necessarily go and break a whole bunch of eggs to make a brand-new cake. I think we need to chart, continue on the course that has been charted. So I wanted to sort of just compliment what you said, and I appreciate that. Thank you very much.
Any else up here? Members of the audience, questions or comments?
Would you like me to go up at the mic so people could hear me, Mr. Newhouse?
If you just stand at your place, I'm sure that we'll be able to pick up on that. Thank you.
Couple of questions pertaining to the agenda items. Mr. Hall mentioned about the Insurance Advisory Board.
Yes, we already had that discussion, though. We're on the Town Manager's position in that selection process.
Well, I realize that, Mr. Newhouse. I also realize, correct me if I'm wrong, that Mr. Hall plays a lead role in negotiations for health insurance?
Mr. Hall plays an integral role in all collective bargaining issues, including health insurance. I wouldn't speak to the manager in characterizing exactly how essential he is in that, but certainly, over the course of time, I've come to appreciate that Jeff is the go-to person in Town Hall with the specifics of health insurance, much the same way that human resources directors and the like might be charged with that responsibility in other towns and private organizations.
With regard to Mr. Shampoo's comments, there's always room for improvement. If there's always room for improvement, and this board is here tonight to discuss the selection process, but you don't seem to be willing to go through a process, my question would be, why would you even have an agenda item that talks about a selection process? It doesn't even seem to be a process.
Could I answer that question if you fully want? I don't want to interrupt you, but if you're directing that question at the board, I would say this. First of all, this conversation as to how to go about this process is a public one. And by having an agenda item, that is the appropriate manner in which members of the board should discuss this, i.e., out in the open. I suppose that rather than having this agenda item, theoretically, you could have Selectmen just discuss it somewhere else and come in here and say that, you know, we're interested in Jeff Hall. That's not how this board operates, it's not how open government operates. And quite frankly, it so happens that there were four, I think, very like-minded people here in terms of the direction that the town needs to take. That doesn't mean that there's, that there's no process. I mean, to the contrary, I think what you probably saw here tonight was an endorsement of a process whereby we give due consideration to an internal candidate, much the way that it happens in the private sector on, I won't say all the time, but often happens in the private sector. People give an internal candidate a shot at the job first. So, you know, I think that there's no appointment made here tonight, that that's something that needs to be done in the future, but I don't want to mince words either. What I heard was a board that unanimously believes that we need to, we need to confirm that Mr. Hall is interested and that, you know, that he wants to be the next town manager and have a conversation with him about that in public. And seems to me that the board is unanimously moving in that direction. But in terms of the process, we are going to invite him in, and just four individual Selectmen have indicated the direction that we think we're going.
So my concern is, you're not even leaving the door open for any other candidates for a position to apply?
Here's my take on it. You could open the door, and I apologize if I'm repeating what I said earlier, but all I can do is repeat what I said earlier to answer your question. From my standpoint, you could open the door to Massachusetts, New England, the East Coast, the United States, or the rest of the world. You could go through a rigorous search process and interview process, and at the end of the day, I can't see myself putting a number-one, you know, candidate on anybody else. I can't, I can't imagine myself saying that anybody else is in a better position to continue the work that's been done in Wilmington at this particular time than Jeff Hall. So could you go through that search process? Absolutely. To me, it'd be disingenuous for me to support that process, because I believe we have the best candidate right, right at our disposal.
Well, my perception of your perspective is that you have blinders on, and I think it's a disservice to the community not to open up this process to other candidates who could be excellent managers, who may be able to come up with creative, innovative ways to lower taxes and to run the town in a more efficient manner. Couple of things that disturb me, which is why I tried to ask the question earlier about the insurance advisory board, because at a previous finance committee meeting, I sat in and I listened to them discuss stop-loss insurance. And one of the most disturbing things to me is, the stop-loss insurance did not go off a competitive bid. I believe it was a $9 million contract. And at the finance committee, I was told that it was a $100,000 deductible, but I later found out that it was $150,000 deductible. So we are paying $9 million for an insurance policy that we will never collect on unless a claim goes over $150,000. And if Mr. Hall is the lead negotiator, I have a problem with that. Tonight, you mentioned about-
Let me, let me just stop at that for two reasons. First of all, I've heard this speech that you're giving at least three times in this forum under public comment, and each and every time that you've raised it, the manager has stepped in and said, those facts, those statements are just misstatements, they are not factual. So I'm going to give Mr. Kyra the opportunity to step in and to make those corrections for the fourth time. And in terms of being the lead negotiator, I think if you roll back the tape, I don't think that's what I said Jeff was. So, you know, that just speaks to the inaccuracy with which you make statements in this forum and others. So before you go on to the next one, I'd like to ask Mr. Kyra to step in and address those misstatements again.
Well, there may be some confusion. The stop-loss insurance is a separate insurance. The $9 million number that was just referred to was the cost that was budgeted for employee health insurance. You don't have a contract for $9 million for employee health insurance. You don't know what the health insurance is going to, going to cost. What you do is you have a contract with a particular provider, in this case, Blue Cross, or Blue Shield of Massachusetts, provides that. We're a self-insured company, and they give our, give us administrative services and manage that process for us. In addition, the stop-loss insurance is something very, very separate from that. The stop-loss insurance does not cost $9 million, as was just stated. We do go out and solicit different companies, as evidenced by the fact that we've had different companies over the past several years, provide stop-loss insurance, which, which is an insurance that you purchase to protect the town from catastrophic claims. It's much the same as done virtually everywhere. I'm prevented from giving you specific examples of catastrophic claims, but in fact, there were some, some claims, several claims, that went over the minimum threshold established by the, by the stop-loss insurance.
And that's because of people's right to privacy medically?
Absolutely, and, you know, there were some rather public folks that were identified over the past few years that have had some major, serious illnesses, and I certainly don't think it makes sense to get into that. But suffice it to say, it's two very different things. One is your regular employee health insurance, and the other is a stop-loss program designed specifically for catastrophic illnesses.
Having heard that, all I can say is, that is quite different than what I heard at the finance committee meeting.
You said that, Mr. McDonald, several times.
We have a finance committee-
Several times, you were told that the person who could best answer those questions, and this was a finance committee meeting that I wasn't at, it wasn't a regular finance committee hearing, it was, it was a finance committee meeting that talked about use of the finance committee reserve account, and Mr. Hall wasn't at that meeting. And neither was anybody, frankly, at that meeting that could speak specifically to the questions that you raised. Health insurance is a very complex subject, and, you know, I don't pretend to be an expert in blasting, and blasters probably shouldn't, you know, pretend to be experts in health insurance. They should go and get the information that's necessary. You were told on several occasions that you should probably talk to Mr. Hall about health insurance, but instead, you want to rely on a statement, it may have been a misstatement, I wasn't at that meeting, but on a statement that may have been made by somebody who didn't have all the facts. There's, there's nobody that's omnipotent, nobody can, can provide all the answers all the time. And perhaps more often, people should be willing to, you know, say those three magic words. I don't know, because there's no shame in that. In this case, though, now, we provided you with the response. I suspect that it's not going to matter, just as the conversations we've had about aerial ladder trucks in the past, that the same statements are going to be made by you in the future, and the same questions are going to come up, despite the fact that we've provided you with those answers.
Could you tell us, Mr. Kyra, if we pay money into the insurance advisory board?
No, we don't pay. The insurance advisory committee, and Mr. Hall, I think, explained that, and this is not the subject matter, but-
Yeah, I was just going to interject and say that, you know, this goes, as is typically the case, this goes well beyond what the agenda item is intended to discuss. I'm in the enviable position that the chairman often finds himself with you, Mr. McDonald, is to simply rule you out of order and create a ruckus, or allow you to finish your question and then allow somebody to straighten out the inaccurate statements and to provide the correct information. So since the question was asked, and Mr. Kyra began to answer, and I'm going to ask him to finish his answer, then I'm going to give you one more opportunity to see if there's anything more on this agenda item that you want to discuss. Mr. Kyra?
Insurance Advisory Council is a statutory body, in that it is established by statute law, and the Insurance Advisory Council includes one member representative from each of the union in town, whether it be the local dispatch union, or the largest union in town, which represents the teachers. All of those unions, one member of each of those unions become a member of the Insurance Advisory Council, along with a representative from the retirees. The representative from the retirees is appointed by the Appointed Authority in this case, which is the Board of Selectmen. They meet to discuss insurance issues, as they did with regard to the dental insurance, which, as was stated by Mr. Hall, is fully funded by the employee. The town of Wilmington pays nothing into the dental insurance program. It's 100% employee-funded. They make a recommendation, and the board and myself can accept or reject that recommendation. Within the Insurance Advisory Committee, there are eight voting members, and that's based upon the largest union, so the seven largest unions would be a voting member, and then from that point, they join with the retiree and they make a recommendation. The voting members represent the Wilmington Teachers Association, ASME Unit 2, which is a local government unit that represents support service folks, clerical, and public work, the educational assistants at the school department, ASME Unit 1, which is the public buildings personnel, cafeteria employees, the firefighters' union, NEPBA Local 1, which represents patrolmen. Those are the seven groups. So you can see there are others that I didn't mention, like the police supervisors or the dispatch, and others who don't have enough, the assistant principals, who are all representative groups, but although they're part of the IAC, they don't have a vote at the table. The law is very specific, it says the seven folks. We don't fund them, because we don't fund an IAC, we just convene a meeting.
Okay. Any other questions relative to the Board of Selectmen discussion on the town manager's selection process?
Yes, two questions. Do you plan on entering into this contract before Town Meeting? And number two, how do you deal with the article that is submitted to the Town Meeting for a Town Charter change, which seeks to change the term of the contract from three years to two years? And also add an additional, broaden the scope of the people that could be hired for the job to include a corporate president?
Okay. In terms of your question, first of all, I stated at the Planning Board Finance Committee hearing, and I'll state it again now, you as the petitioner have now said in two different forums that the purpose of that article somehow pertains to the town manager's contract. I know you authored the petition, but it's simply not true. The petition and the Town Charter deals with the term of appointment for the town manager. So going back to your first question, in terms of a contract with the next town manager, and let's assume for the sake of argument, it's Mr. Hall, I don't know when we'll get that contract done, whether it would be before or after Town Meeting, but frankly, it doesn't matter. I mean, if you look back at the past two decades, the town manager's appointment has always been for three years. The town manager's contract is, is not always commensurate with that three years. The appointment is, is distinguishable from the contract. And so you as the petitioner, going forward at Town Meeting, should understand that if Town Meeting adopts that, if it's sent to the legislature, the legislature adopts the legislation and kicks it back to the town, that would make the appointment up to two years. That's different from the contract. So, you know, and in terms of opening it up to other, to the extent that, that charter change, that proposal would open it up to, to an additional set of people that would meet the eligibility criteria, the threshold requirements, going forward in time, that would apply. But certainly, you know, in this case, and with specific reference to the assistant town manager, obviously, there's nothing in that proposed charter change that would render him ineligible. You're just, and the second part of that, you're trying to increase the pool of potential applicants based on the threshold eligibility, right? That's the gist of it.
It's actually to do the town a service rather than a disservice, to broaden the scope of people who could qualify for the job. For example, there are some people who are-
I get that, and I, and I know I'm interrupting you, but again, I don't want to get too far afield in this process. The simple answer to your question is that that proposed charter change has no effect on what we're doing with this town manager's selection process. Going forward in time, if the town adopts it and it becomes a law of the land, then it certainly would increase the pool of eligible applicants as you're, as you're advocating.
I just want to clarify something. I did not suggest that it disqualifies Mr. Hall. With regard to the change of term from three years to two years, the purpose of that is, if there is a problem with the town manager and we need to replace him, or we need to let him go, we are not bound by a contract that is for three years. We can enter into a contract for two years. So I guess the next question is, do you plan on entering into a contract if Mr. Hall is interested for three years or two years?
I can't speak for the rest of the board, but let me answer the question directly, as the question was answered directly at the public meeting last week. Because the appointment is not the same as the contract, just because you have a three-year contract does not obligate the town to pay the manager for three years if, for cause, you terminate that employment. So it doesn't matter how many times you say it, it doesn't make it true. Right now, if Mr. Kyra gave us cause to relieve him of his responsibilities, he wouldn't get, be getting paid through the end of his contract. Now, you know, contracts have all different provisions, but what I'm telling you is, a three-year contract does not guarantee three years of comp- a three-year contract does not guarantee three years of compensation if somebody doesn't do the job.
There could be a disagreement. There could be a lawsuit in terms of why a person's let go. So, I mean, it's a relatively simple question. Would you commit to the town...
And Mr. Newhouse is absolutely right. Just because you signed a three-year contract, that doesn't mean you're obligated to pay the three years. Exactly what Mr. Newhouse stated, that in the contract, if there's just cause to terminate the town manager, there's just cause. And that would be with any contract, I'd assume, with a superintendent or even with a CEO that's running an apple, you know, so...
Does the town meeting have the ability to not fund that position if they choose to not accept Mr. Hall as the town manager?
Town meeting has the say over the entire budget. I would like to think that the Assembly would give some credence to the town manager, the Board of Selectmen, and the Finance Committee when those individuals say to the town, "You don't handle a contract issue by wiping out a budget item." I mean, the town can, the town has the town meeting, I should say, and the people who show up, they dictate what the budget is going to be. If a town deletes the funding for a town manager, I can't imagine how that Assembly would think that's a good idea. If you have contractual obligations, it still wouldn't alleviate your contractual obligations. But I'm talking hypothetically. So, I guess...
Can I, can I, can I... I'm sorry. This process, when I got put in this position three years ago, I recognize that we have a lot of responsibilities as members of the Board of Selectmen. Some of them we'll do later tonight with regards to authorizing the use of the common for a garden club, authorizing the use of the streets of Wilmington for a parade. I enjoy those responsibilities. Those are the kind of the niceties of the job. But when Mr. Kyra made it known that he was going to be leaving, it instantly became clear to me that the most important thing that I will do as a member of this board will be identify and hire his successor. And so, I want everyone to understand how important, and I don't want to speak for you, my colleagues, but I suspect, knowing you the way that I do, that you, like me, view this as very, very important and want to make sure that we don't drop the ball on this one. I don't want to take an action that will be a legacy to me after I've left my office that I will look back and say, "Oh, I wish I didn't do that." This is the most important thing that I will do, sitting in this chair. So, I guess I say that because I want to now go to the audience, to anybody else other than the person who has dominated this meeting like he dominates every other meeting. I want to ask anybody else here, please, can I get some feedback from you as to whether or not you think the process that we are engaging in is positive, negative? Are you ambivalent about it? Should we move on to the next bullet? Please, I want to get some feedback from somebody else in this audience. And I don't care who you are, but please, stand up and have your voice heard. Mr. Verman?
Hi, I'm Dan Verman. I'm from 131 Millsack, Dapp. I have no problem with the way that this board is conducting not only just this discussion, but every discussion that I've seen over the last six months. And I find it unfortunate that you have to undergo what you've had to undergo for a long time, personally. And this is just my personal view. I think that it's a disgrace what you guys have been forced to undergo. Plain and simple. I haven't gotten along with everybody on this board, especially Mr. McCoy. I think we've had, we've butted heads long ago. I'm over that. I think you know how I feel now. Mr. Newhouse, Mr. Shampoo, Mr. Smagley, I've supported all you folks. Judy, I've supported you too. But that's irrelevant to what I'm discussing right now. As a board and as a town, we deserve more respect than what has been shown by certain individuals in this room. It's terrible. I find personally, I'm offended. I'm offended by it. I find it disheartening. I find it embarrassing. When we have a certain meeting, town meeting, selectman meeting, name a meeting, there's a limited period of time in which the public can speak. Short period. And I find it offensive that one individual can monopolize that time, in effect, steal it from the rest of the town. When you turn a town meeting into a 10-hour fiasco where you're discarding people from attending, the people that do show up, their voices are silenced because they're either intimidated to discuss anything, or they don't want to belabor a process that has already been maligned beyond all recognition. I apologize on behalf of the town to this board. I think there's certain individuals that should apologize to the town on behalf of themselves. And I just want to say, I support what you're doing. This town, the results that have happened in this town, not only for the residents, our prospective people who want to purchase here, employees who work here, whether they live here or not, it's been wonderful, the things that I've seen happen in this town over the last 10 years. Straightforward, wonderful, bordering on miraculous when you look at what's happened in other communities and the economic climate that we're all dealing with. So, whether I have any gripe with anyone on this board, whether I'm friends with anyone on this board, is irrelevant. You all deserve to be treated better than what you've been treated just by taking the time and doing what you're doing without any compensation and going through what you've had to go through over the last series of months. And that's my freedom of speech, and that's what I want to say. And I want to support you guys, and I think that you're doing a wonderful job, every single one of you.
I'd just like to make an apology to Mr. Verman. I apologize for...
You're out of order, Mr. Hall. Please be seated. We'll give you another chance to speak. Please be seated. I never, I never heard your name mentioned. Please be seated. Please be seated, sir. Please be seated, sir. Please be seated, sir. Mr. Verman, Mr. Verman, Mr. Verman, please sit down. Mr. McDonald, Mr. McDonald, I asked you four times to please be seated. You're out of order. Lieutenant, Lieutenant, sir, Lieutenant, sir. Lieutenant, here's what I'm going to ask you to do. I've just asked Mr. McDonald at least 10 times to be seated. I'm going to give other people in the audience the courtesy of being able to speak the way Mr. McDonald insists that he get the chance to do. I'm not asking you to remove him from the meeting. I'm just telling you to please be alert. If I rule him out of order again and he insists on speaking over me, then I will ask you to remove him from the meeting. Thank you, sir. Yes, I saw somebody else say...
Hi, Lisa Johnson, Aldridge Road. Just one quick point regarding my experiences as a hiring manager and working with colleagues who hire, private sector, public sector, it is very, very common to hire from within. You train your employees, you invest a lot of money in training your staff. It is a good thing to hire from within, and it is more commonplace in today's society to hire from within.
Any other, yes, Mr. Bodden?
Michael, two weeks ago at our selectmen's meeting, I entertained the idea to them, "Are we going to promote from in-house?" And like the gentlemen up there said, "We're having our next meeting. We'll discuss this." Well, I'm here a little late. I caught most of the conversation. Seems to me that by the majority of the board, we've already decided that Jeffrey Hall will be our next town manager if he entertains the idea. I have two questions, two, three questions to ask you. Mr. Kyra's done a wonderful job over his tenure. I consider that. There, I don't get along with a lot of his propositions, but overall, you guys do a fair job. I can't agree with all of yous all the time. But by promoting from in-house, I'm sure he's aware of the problems of the town and the future of the town and the likes. Now, would it be in the best interest of this board and/or the residents of the town of Wilmington to entertain exclusively Mr. Hall and forego any outside candidates? Or does this board feel that there's a possibility that an outside candidate may bring in a new perspective or better ideas? And again, along with bringing in candidates from the outside, would they be applying for this job and the paperwork being shuffled under the table because the board is considering Mr. Hall overwhelmingly for this job? And the last question I have to ask, whoever our new town manager will be, is he going to be hired at Mr. Kyra's current pay rate without any, and I won't say qualifications, without knowing what he's going to do? Or will we reduce the offer for a new town manager in his first year or so and say, "Hey, he's doing a great job. Do we give him a raise after the first year? Or do we start him up here?" And it's hard to take money away. Look, I'd like that answer for us on the pay rate.
I'd like to give it to you first because it's, from my perspective, the easiest one to respond to. Compensation is a matter of bargaining between the selectman and the town manager, whoever that might be. For the board to comment on salary and any kind of compensation in this forum would be counterproductive to the town. I mean, if, I'll give you a logical extreme, and if anybody from the press quotes me, I appreciate that it's a logical extreme. If we said, "Oh, if Mr. Kyra's the next, if Mr. Hall's going to be the next manager, I think we ought to pay him $1 million a year." That wouldn't be very bright for us to acknowledge in a public forum. So, likewise, to, you know, to say, "I think we ought to pay him $10,000 a year," that wouldn't make a whole lot of sense either. So, to your question, that's not something that we would discuss openly until we have first discussed it as a board and executive session, to offer some compensation, come to an agreement, and then that information is, becomes public. But it doesn't make any sense for us to answer that question. In terms of your previous question, there was, I followed you up to a point. You were, I think, characterizing the board's position that it seems as though we support Mr. Hall for the position of manager, and would we be opening that up to other applicants? And what I heard tonight, and I welcome the board to jump in if I don't do it justice, but what I heard tonight was a clear indication from the board that they would like to invite Mr. Hall in to further discuss his ideas for the position and for the transition because this board thinks that that's the right person for it. You used some expression about outsider or other applicants providing an application and that being shuffled under the table, I think were your words. I'm saying that's what I don't want to do. I don't, if my mind's made up, I'm going to tell people my mind's made up, I don't want to go through a dog and pony show of accepting applications and shuffle them under the table. And so, you know, we've agreed that we're going to invite Mr. Hall in at a public meeting because it's the consensus of the board that he ought to be given due consideration for the position at this time.
Mr. Chairman, I could just say, I stand by my statements earlier. I think longevity means something. It speaks volumes. Jeff's not, hasn't been the assistant town manager for a year or two. He's been here 22, Michael, 23 years?
25 years.
25 years. I've served up here 22 years, three years a member of the planning board for 25 years. So, I think longevity speaks volumes. I think seeing him doing his job. And I just want to just change, not to put the lieutenant on the spot, but WCTV, could you just scan over to the gentleman standing, and I don't, to the lieutenant there, just in the press, take a look at that gentleman, just scan. And the reason why I'm not putting him on the spot, in all my 25 years, 22 of those 25, serving as a selectman, we've never, ever, and I think it needs to be stated, had to have police presence here at a selectmen's meeting because of Mr. McDonald. That's the only reason why this individual is here. And I want people at home to take a look at the lieutenant being here and understanding that, and people ask, "Why is the police there?" And I'll say it again, 22 years, I've never had to have police presence at meeting after meeting after meeting. And the press needs to pick up on that. And that's the only reason why I'm here, and I'm not to embarrass the lieutenant. He does an outstanding job. And that's the only reason why this lieutenant is here, is to try to, what Mr. Newhouse said, he asked the gentleman 10 times to sit down. And it's just really sad and pathetic. This is what it's come down to. So, people really need to understand what we go through, meeting after meeting, and we're not getting paid a lot of money to do this. It's more of a labor of love, I would assume, already being here for a long time. But we do a lot of good in this community. I'm raising my wife, I'm, my children, my wife, we're living in this community. I was born in this town 50-plus years ago. You know, I mean, it's a wonderful community, and I think we all give back. We have a Boy Scout here. I used to be a member of the Cub Scouts, Weblo Boy Scouts. My mother was a den mother. You know, there's, the roots run deep in this community, all right? Mr. Pupus family's been here, Mr. Kyra's family, the Newhouse. We've been here a long time. But meeting after meeting, and that's the only reason why the police is here, and people need to understand that. And it's really sad and pathetic that it has to be that way, and it's sad, given the society that we live in today. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, yes, Mr. Hayden?
Dick Hayden, I'm here, you, also on the planning committee. We can remember before, Mr. Kyra, we had Buzz Stepczynski, and I don't know how many years Buzz was here. He was here for a fair amount of years, and he moved on to Andover. And then Mike came in, and then he had 22 there about years. I mean, we're talking about stability, stability in Andover, stability in Wilmington. Assistant town manager has all that time with us. He's bringing in stability. You know, I think these are things, if you went around the state and looked at other municipalities in the state, you'll find out they don't have that. They're changing chairs all the time. So, we should be fortunate if we get a chance to keep stability going. Thank you.
Mr. Leonfelter?
I didn't want to make a comment specific to the subject at hand, but I wanted to make a comment, a comment that I heard. And my comment was that I thought Mr. Verman was a little self-righteous.
Verman.
Verman, in his comments about free speech, when he was the one that moved the question to town meeting after only two people spoke about the high school. So, I think he just wanted to make a comment.
Can I address that? Mr. Chairman, now, that was a personal reference.
It's a point of privilege. Go ahead, sure, go ahead and respond.
Mr. Leonfelter, I was at that town meeting, and I sat through, and when I got up to move the question, not one single individual was standing at a microphone.
That's wrong. There was two people at a microphone.
Well, listen, sir, sir, listen closely to what I just said. When I got up to stand at that microphone, I looked around. Not one individual was at a microphone. After I moved the question, sir, I turned around and you were behind me.
I keep, I won't discuss it before this...
Well, that's a fact.
I won't discuss it before this board. It's unimportant now.
It was a public meeting.
You go on believing what you want to believe.
Mr., I wanted to give you the chance to respond on a matter of personal privilege, Mr. Verman, but the fact of the matter is, it was a town meeting vote, and the moderator made the call that he made, and I happen to think it was perfectly appropriate, but that doesn't matter. At town meeting, within the limits of the law, the town moderator is the boss, and that's the call that he made. That's just the way it goes. Yes, in the back.
I'm losing my voice. Mary, Donovan, Mary at Avon, Wilmington. Most of the community, I would say, feels that this board does a wonderful representation of the business of our town. And what you've had to go through over the past months, nobody would expect anyone to have to go through. It's too much. That's not an accurate reflection of our town, and it does need to stop.
Thank you for those comments, yes.
I just wanted to, I'm not going to engage in the debate, but I just was listening to Mr. Hayden make a comment about my predecessor, Buzz Stepczynski. And it occurred to me that Mr. Stepczynski, and I think this is a good point of reference, was the assistant town manager in Wilmington when he was appointed town manager without a nationwide search. He went on to do a wonderful job here for many, many years, and he's distinguished himself in the town of Andover. He's been the head of the Massachusetts Municipal Association, among other things, and is certainly considered one of the top managers in the state in a very prestigious town. He was the assistant town manager for about... He was the assistant town manager for about three years in Wilmington when he was appointed the town manager. I'd also note, more recently, I, I just say this historically in terms of, particularly for the newspaper's benefit, because this has happened in the past, and in our own school department. When Mr. McCalliffe left, the school committee made what I believe was a very good choice, they didn't go out and do a nationwide search, but they promoted from within, and Mrs. Benton has certainly been a successful superintendent. So I, I only point that out so that if people think that what the selectmen are talking about is something that is unique, it's, not only is it not unique, it hasn't necessarily been the practice in the, in the town over the past several decades.
I wasn't here when those things occurred, so I didn't have the luxury of sort of that, that personal one-on-one knowledge of the things that you just described, but I appreciate you bringing it up because it helps corroborate for me that my judgment is right.
Certainly, to those two points, I was a member of the school committee when Bill had left and Joanne was hired, and we had a lot of similar discussions to this point. And certainly, the school department represents a very significant investment in our children and our faculty and staff, and also is a major line item in our town budget. So certainly, I think the overwhelming majority consensus is that that was a very positive move, and we've really solidified and strengthened the school administration, and I feel that this town manager and assistant town manager discussion certainly is, is moving in that same momentum and direction that we've already proven over the past five years. So just want to reiterate that and once again state my support.
All right, we're gonna, we're gonna.
I thank you for answering my couple of questions accurately. I'm unaware of the process and everything, and the last shot, I'm going to say, Mr. McDonald, I feel, should express his opinions and views such as the gentleman behind me and the woman behind me and Dick Hayden. We all should come here, we should not single, just because there's a lot of things Mr. McDonald says that I'm not fond of, but he should be allowed to speak. And each and every one of us, and we shouldn't single out and, and say blame Mr. McDonald for keeping the town meeting going for 10 hours or the selectmen's meeting. This is our only venue to express ourselves.
And again.
I thank you.
Mr. Board, I'm going to close out this segment of the agenda by saying this. First of all, thank you to the members of the audience who have indulged this discussion beyond really what the agenda item was all about. You know, on, on every issue, it's always difficult for the chairman, and I empathize, it's always difficult to err on the side of giving people the opportunity to be heard without abusing everybody else's right to be heard. And so I, for one, have tried to err on the side of giving people the opportunity to be heard on this issue, and I appreciate people in the audience who have expressed support for the way that we do that in general, and for bearing with us through, through that discussion. I see these two young sharp guys in front here, and I'm saying, we've got to have the chairman come back and move this meeting along for guys like that. It's getting late, let's go. It's an interesting perspective, sitting on that side and watching what goes on up here, and, and once again, I'm proud to say I belong to this board, professionalism that they exude in all the work that they do, not just at meetings, but all the time. And again, just for the record, I did stay because I have a town employee, and I didn't want to have any conflict going on as appointing a new town manager, that's, that's the reason I was sitting over there. Thank you, Mr. Newhouse. Okay, communications.
Mr. Chairman, the board has a copy of the Shawshank Valley Regional Vocational Tech School District Budget for fiscal year 2013. This was sent to you by the treasurer of the school committee, Paul McShane Lambert, and it reiterates the same number that has already been published in the budget and has gone forward through the finance committee hearing process where Superintendent Lyons came in to speak to the board. That being the requested appropriation at the annual town meeting for the Shawshank assessment at $3,562,275. You have correspondence from the Water Supply Citizens Advisory Committee to the Mass Water Resources Authority regarding the statement on the MWRE water quality and the DCR Division of Water Supply Protections Forest Management Program. It is a statement from the committee that essentially indicates that the water supply is being managed through best principles and practices, both of the Executive Office of Environmental Affairs, as well as the Office of Watershed Management's Forestry Program. The board has been invited by the Tewksbury Wilmington Emblem Club to attend their installation of offices on Monday, April 9th. You have a, a letter and an invitation from Barbara Metcalf, who's the past president of the group. As the board knows, this typically seems to fall on a meeting night, and there's no difference again this year, so.
Perhaps we can write them a letter thanking them and congratulating the new officers.
Be happy to do that, and we can, we can send along a commendation from the board if you, if you'd like.
Please, and maybe we could have them scheduled on first or third Monday.
It says here the buffet starts at 6:00, so we could go for a little while.
The board has correspondence from Jane Lyman of Xfinity, the senior manager for government and regulatory affairs, talking about channel, channel lineup changes as well as the digital network enhancement. All of the subscribers to Xfinity will receive this information, which talks about a channel called WWDP moving from channel 72 to channel 10, and educational access will move from channel 10 to channel 99. This I'm mentioning because channel 10 is your regular local access channel for educational programming on Comcast Xfinity. So if you have that beginning April 17th, if you go to that channel, you're not going to see it. So you should, you should have gotten a notification. Sometimes we don't pay too close attention to the notifications that are included from the cable companies. But the new access channel on Comcast will now be channel 99 as it relates to educational programming, as opposed to channel 10. And then we also have the letter that talks about the digital network enhancement process that they continue to go through at Xfinity. Again, you'll have that information directly. The board is being asked to consider signing a consent and waiver notice regarding the Lottie Weisberg and Lena Leiter student scholarship funds. This is something that the board has done in the past, as you know. The estate of Ms. Weisberg included the town of Wilmington students through a scholarship fund program that has been set up in cooperation with her estate, has included the town as one of the beneficiaries. And in this case, there's a sale of real estate in the amount of $100,000, of which $25,000 would go to the town of Wilmington. There's already been other monies deposited in this Lottie Weisberg and Lena Leiter student scholarship funds. Ms. Weisberg and Ms. Leiter were longtime teachers in the system, now both deceased, but their, their will left through their estate, remembered their many, many years working with the, with the students and the Wilmington school system. And therefore, in order to access these funds, it's the board's responsibility to sign a consent and waiver notice for that purpose. So I would ask the board to vote to sign the consent and waiver notice if it's their desire, and then to execute it so that I can get this back to the attorneys.
Okay, any questions, comments, or a motion?
I move to consign the consent and waiver notice as presented by council.
Motion made second, all in favor? unanimous?
To the extent that, that any of the, the family of Ms. Weisberg may still be in the area or listening or reading, I, I think maybe it would be prudent for us to, once again, or maybe on an ongoing basis, express our gratitude and appreciation for her thoughtfulness to the town.
I'd be happy to do that. I'll also note that we made mention of them in this upcoming issue of Town Topics, which will be distributed with the next tax bill mailings, which go out at the end of the week.
Thank you. Just one more.
Yes. Mr. Chairman, the board is being asked to, to consider signing a determination of uniqueness relative to the acquisition of the real property currently owned by Century Bank and Trust Company, which is located at 9 Cross Street in Wilmington, Mass. on map 39, parcel 5. The uniqueness determination is something that was put forth through our town council relative to the property that the town hopes to acquire based upon action that may or may not be taken by the town meeting. Obviously, if the town meeting votes against the acquisition of the property, then there would be no, no, no purchase. However, if they are in agreement and they agree to purchase the property by vote at town meeting, then we need this determination of uniqueness, which should take place prior to that time. So we would need to have a, a vote to accept the determination of uniqueness relative to the acquisition of the 9 Cross Street property.
Okay. Questions, comments, or a motion?
I'd make a motion, if described by the town manager.
Second.
Motion made second, all in favor? unanimous?
The board is being asked to consider the request of Wilmington Garden Club to use the town comment on Saturday, May 12th, 2012, from 8:30 a.m. to noon for their annual plant sale.
Question, comments, or a motion?
Assume no conflicts that we need to be concerned about, right?
No, sir.
I move to grant the request of Wilmington Garden Club as outlined in the memorandum.
Second.
Motion made second, all in favor? unanimous?
The board is being asked to consider the request of the Memorial Day Parade Committee to conduct a parade on Monday, May 28th, 2012. You have a letter from the Veteran Services Director. On behalf of the Memorial Day Committee, the letter includes an invitation to the entire board of selectmen to participate in remembering and honoring our departed comrades on that day. The parade would assemble at the Market Basket parking lot at 9:30, with the step-off time being 10 o'clock. The board has also extended an invitation to participate in the memorial services that will be held at the Wildwood Cemetery. After the parade, we anticipate that starting at 11 o'clock. So we would need a, a vote from the board to approve the request of the committee to conduct the parade on Monday, May 28th.
Questions, comments, or a motion?
Move to grant permission to conduct the town's annual Memorial Day Parade on Monday, March 28th, 2012.
Second.
May 28th.
Did I say May 28th?
March. As is written.
As is written.
Motion made second, all in favor?
I'll second it as written.
Yeah, that's all in favor? unanimous?
The board is being asked to consider renewal of a taxi cab license for Wilmington taxi. The recommendation from the police chief is that there has been no issues that would require the permits not to be approved, and he would recommend that the permit be approved, and in fact has executed them on behalf of the police department. However, this would require a vote of the board of selectmen.
Okay, any questions, comments, or a motion?
Move to grant the request to renew for Wilmington taxis.
Second.
Motion made second, all in favor? unanimous?
And also, the board is being asked to consider the renewal of the taxi cab operator's license, in this case for Timothy J. Flynn, and again, there's a favorable recommendation from the police chief.
Okay. Questions, comments, or a motion?
Move to renew the taxi cab operator's license for Timothy J. Flynn.
Second. Motion made second, all in favor? unanimous?
Mr. Chairman, that concludes the regular business before the board.
Thank you, Mr. Kyra. Public comments?
George Leinfelter. George Leinfelter, I have a letter from Reading Light about a week and a half ago, and it has to do with changing out my analog power meter to a digital power meter, and I was unclear what they were talking about in the letter, and I called them on the phone, and they were a little unresponsive on the phone. This, I don't know if any of you selectmen are aware, but this fits a national discussion about what they call smart meters, where they, they tap your remote sending unit, your political water heater, and they change out your analog power meter with a digital meter, and there's been some problems with people with pacemakers and the radio transmissions and some nausea caused by some of the transmissions, and also some arcing from the transmitter unit on a power heater. And I don't know that that's necessarily what they were talking about in the letter, but I just wanted to make a comment public that I, that it was unclear to me and they were unresponsive. So if anyone talks to you about the letter that they got regarding changing out their analog power meter with a digital meter, I have some concerns about that. I just wanted to put that out there. I would appreciate if someone could maybe get to Reading Light and ask them to clarify not only the, the letter that they sent out, but when they give you a number, a person to call, and they don't know, really have the answers either, that was a little bit distressing to me when they couldn't answer my questions. My second comment that I'd like to make, and I'll be quick about it, was I objected to some of the comments that selectman Newhouse made last week regarding the turf appeal, where he didn't really know what he was talking about, that you don't have to be registered voter to sign the appeal, that the performance standard is resident, not a registered voter, and that I objected to his specifically calling out that he was going to seek the names of attendees at meetings, and it looked like he was going through a list of people based on comments that he saw at a website. And there are a lot of vicious comments on those websites a lot of times, I, I think one of the gentlemen behind me is one of the people that does that a lot, and I just wanted to.
Are you referring to me? Sir, are you referring to me?
I just wanted to express my opinion, express my opinion that I thought those comments last week were inappropriate. Thank you.
Yeah, just, just in, just in response, if I could, Mr. Chairman, I'm, I'm well aware of what the legal standard is under the CM. Yeah, I'm, I'm well aware of what the legal standard is in, in terms of standing to file an appeal with DEP. To me, that, that doesn't mean that that standard makes it right. I think it's perfectly acceptable, and I stand by my request to find who was at the, at the various Conservation Commission hearings, because I, I think it's relevant when people, while they may have standing under the CMR to file an appeal, when proponents of that appeal, and the most vocal proponents of that appeal, are taking issue with the, the level of information that people apparently have with the process, I think it's relevant to see what level and degree of information people who signed the appeal have and, and joined in that. And I just think that's a reasonable position to take from the standpoint of the town, and I know Mr. Leinfelter's objection to my comments. Thank you. Any other public comments? Mr. McDonald?
As I look around tonight, I see the media here, and I would like to encourage the media to put in a public record request to ask specifically for the papers and the places where it was advertised for the employee stop-loss insurance, and to try to put an effort into getting as much information on that as you can, because when I go to a meeting and I'm told one thing, and then we're told another thing here tonight, it makes me look like I'm not telling the truth. But I gather my facts at the meetings. Mr. Hayden is here tonight, he was actually at the meeting where there was a, we did a request for a $350,000 transfer from one account to the other, and I think that's a significant amount of money. With regard to the individuals sitting in front of me, just a question for Mr. Newhouse. Could you tell us, Mr. Newhouse, if Mr. Vermin was a law.
Mr. Newhouse, I'd like to answer, I know it's a ridiculous question. I have no compunction about saying that.
about saying that Mr. Veerman used to work for me. The fact of the matter is, he was an employee, but I treated him as a partner because his degree of skill and capabilities really warranted that that's the way I would treat him. The fact of the matter is that he hasn't worked for me for several years, and even if he did, A, he's entitled to come to this meeting and to speak his mind the way you do every single meeting, minute after minute and hour after hour. He's entitled to that, too. And the fact that he used to work for me, or even if he still worked for me, doesn't diminish his right to speak. Secondly, I agree with every word he said.
Well, I think it should be clarified that Mr. Veerman, who was talking about people at town meeting not getting a chance to speak, put forth a motion to move the question. And I think it should be noted that I did not speak until after that motion went forward. And I believe it was you, Mr. Newhouse, who got up at the town meeting, trying to belittle me, saying that I was using parliamentary procedure to actually try to help the town see some negative consequences of what was being done. So I think it's important...I know you wouldn't want to hear this, Mr. Newhouse, because I realize that you think you don't do anything wrong, but Mr. Veerman...
Mr. McDonald, I've told you many, many times over the past year-plus, the name-calling, the condescending comments have got to stop. Okay, now you just, again, posed a question, I guess a question, to Mr. Newhouse.
Yeah, I hate to belabor the night. I know we have folks here, but when you deal with comments like that, you know, you just feel compelled to respond to them. Mrs. McDonald, you were, in fact, the most vocal opponent to the Wilmington High School project. At town meeting, you voted for it. At town meeting, you were the petitioner on an article which would preserve the Wilmington High School building, which in effect would prevent the development of the site for a new high school. You voted against it. Now, I have to give you the benefit of the doubt that you understood what the high school project was all about, that you really were opposed to it, and you really were in favor of the petition that you submitted. Perhaps I shouldn't give you the benefit of that doubt, but I do. So I am left with the conclusion that you were playing parliamentary games, and I think everybody who sat through that long, hot, ridiculous afternoon that you created would agree with me.
Well, I just wanted to say that when a person like Mr. Veerman who's...
Mr. McDonald.
Excuse me, Mr. McDonald. I would think that a candidate for a position of leadership would be intended in courtesy of the etiquette of some respect.
Again, I got to say, you're done.
Yeah. I'm done? Okay. We'll see what the voters have to say.
Special time meeting.
We wouldn't want you to exemplify any kind of leadership now, would we? We wouldn't want any etiquette.
Lieutenant Pupa, would you please escort Mr. McDonald out of here? I think that's what he would like to do.
I would appreciate to address...
Good night, Mr. McDonald.
I'd like to address Mr. McDonald before he gets pulled out of the meeting.
Go ahead.
My name has been bandied about here pretty much all night, and I'm not even on the board of selectmen. I am a resident, by the way. I pay taxes in this town. I've lived in this town for years. I've worked with this town. I volunteer for this town. I've coached in this town. My kid goes to school in this town. I own property and pay taxes in this town. I have a right to speak. And I find it abhorrent that I can come here. I haven't been before this board or said anything in front of this board in a decade, perhaps. I sit here, and I show up for the first time in 10 years, and I have to have these individuals who make this their charge to come here week after week after week and bellow and exercise their right to speak. Yet, when I come for the first time in 10 years to voice support for the board, some of which I haven't voted for, some of which... And then I come at town meeting, and I exercise my franchise to address town meeting and move something that is properly before town meeting. The motion was in order. It was deemed to be in order by town council and the moderator. So the two times that I've chosen to exercise my right to speak and to come here and to come before a town meeting and do something, I get maligned. I get pulled out. I get accosted, and I get beaten down by these hangers-on that come here every single meeting and bore everyone to tears when they're not insulting our elected representatives. They're boring the town and taking up precious town time. But you know what? They can do it because it's their right. This is my right. This is my right to speak. And I'm a resident, and I come here and I hear my name bandied about for doing nothing but exercising my rights. You should be ashamed of yourself. Mr. Linganfelt, I'll use your name. And Mr. McDonald, I'll use your name. You both should be ashamed of yourself. You're about me. You're a very violent person. You offended me at town.
Sir, would you like...
I just wanted to say, Mr. McDonald, I might be willing to send him some chocolate-covered strawberries and some flowers, and that would help him.
Mr. McDonald, really?
Yes, this is ridiculous.
Gentlemen, I'm sorry. The gentleman in front here, you had your hand up early. I'm sorry.
My name's Bill Plant. I live on 5 Englewood. And I just want to say that this is our first meeting. My son's doing a merit badge, needing to see a meeting. But we watch and go to pretty much all the meetings, and I have no affiliation to anybody here other than my two boys. And I can't say anything but I agree with this gentleman who I've never met in my life, full and wholeheartedly. You have ransacked this meeting, and my son's going to go to bed very late because you extended this meeting. You guys, thank you for the work you do. I totally appreciate it, and I'm sorry you have to do that all the time.
Thank you very much, and good luck with your badge. And if we could do anything, if you'd like to ask some questions or call us or contact the town manager in his office, that'd be great.
If I might ask, Mr. Chairman, through you, are these gentlemen here just to observe the meeting, or is this something that we should be doing to help them now that they're here? I'm not clear. Okay.
Okay. Any other public comments? Thank you. New Business Committee reports.
I'll just be real quick. I'd just like to...And you kids who live on Englewood Drive, I used to live on Kenwood Ave for many years, so I know where you guys are from. So Redwood Terrace used to play street hockey up there, just to let you know. So I appreciate all of volunteerism, what you guys do, you know, and best of luck to the badge. And believe me...
Good luck. Thank you.
These are good meetings from time to time, you know?
Thank you, guys.
That's all. I just want to say thanks to the residents out there that gave us positive response back. And I'll tell you, I do hear it, and I'm sure that my members do hear positive response from residents, and there's a case of volunteerism right there, the scouting and soccer and the Little League. So thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Nothing further. Thank you.
Yeah, well, I just, I think in spite of how the meeting sort of seems like it was really negative, I'm really emboldened by some really positive things that happened here tonight. Most importantly, that we showed, I would say, we showed leadership. We showed unanimity, agreement. We showed teamwork, that we can work as a team even when sometimes we don't always agree on every single point. I think we all showed that we could work together and come to a mutual beneficial conclusion with regards to the process for the next town manager. So I think that was a very positive conversation. I'm also very excited about having signed the determination of uniqueness relative to the Yentown property. And I'm hopeful that the town will join me at town meeting, voting in favor of that and finishing that purchase. I think that's a very exciting development for our community, and I look forward to continuing that process. So thank you very much.
Always last to be up to the plate here, but I'm going to take my swings anyway. So basically, you know, all the comments have been made, but I do want to say I appreciate the public involvement in sharing comments. I just want to say this, that aside from all the detracting conversations that do go on, I hope that people at home can clearly see that there is a full agenda here, and the town's business is being advanced forward in light of difficult circumstances. And certainly, any resident and any member of the town of Wilmington does have the right to speak regardless of where he or she falls on a particular topic. But I do want to say that as a member of the board of selectmen, I take my responsibility very seriously, as I know the other members do, and I'm proud of the business that has been accomplished years when I wasn't part of the board and where we're at today and where we're moving forward in the future. And I think this town is poised for success. It's a progressive and dynamic community, and I think that everyone on this board is committed to see that that continues. And even if my decisions and comments here may not be popular to some people, it's truly how I feel on a personal and professional level. And I'm a woman of my word. I stand by my word. It's not going to change. And certainly, I can respect process, but I also can also respect logic. And I think that we have assets, and we are the beneficiary of great things that exist right here in the town. And I'm simply making the choice to honor and respect that and to try and make that an even more enhanced role within the town, specifically with Jeff Hall and any other opportunity that comes forward. So I feel good about tonight's work that's been done, and I look forward to continuing on in that regard. Thank you.
Thank you. And I just also want to reiterate, when I was sitting over there watching up here, I think the professionalism that this board displays in that one issue, and I think every week and on a daily basis through this manager's office, to what goes on in this town, is great. And I appreciate everybody coming tonight. I'd like to see this crowd. We meet every second, fourth, Wednesday...Monday, I'm sorry, if you want to come down. Okay. Any important dates?
Mr. Chairman, I just want to let the public know that on March 30th this week, the Wilmington Educational Foundation Vendor Fair Night will be held at the Knights of Columbus Hall from 7:00 p.m. to 11:00 p.m. It's a wonderful event that's sponsored by the Educational Foundation that benefits our students. April 6th is the last day to register to vote in the town election and the town meeting. The town clerk's office will be open until 8:00 p.m. on April 6th for those people who are not already registered. The Rabies Clinic, the annual rabies clinic conducted by the Board of Health, will be held on April 7th, Saturday, from noon to 2:00 p.m. at the Public Buildings Department located on Church Street. It's for both dogs and cats, dogs on a leash, cats on a carrier, $10 per animal. And we invite youngsters from Wilmington to join with their family members to participate in the annual Easter egg hunt, which will be held also on that same day, April 7th, at the town common beginning at 2:00 p.m. The board next meets on April 9th at 7:00 p.m. And if I might, Mr. Chairman, just in, as a suggestion to the question that was posed by the resident, by Mr. Linganfelt, with regard...
I'd appreciate if you could...
Yeah.
...be a little clearer about it.
Well, let me just make two suggestions. One is, first, a statement that I'm not aware of, so I don't know really anything about that. I'd be happy to get information from you. There is a Citizens Advisory Committee meeting with representatives from the town that is being held Wednesday, as a matter of fact, so that it's a public meeting if anybody is interested. Or you can either provide me with the information, and I can give it to Reading Light and get clarified, or send me an email.
Do you remember that meeting was offered?
I think it's in Reading this month. Does it...Do you remember? If anybody wants to call my office, it's certainly on the town clerk's website. If anybody wants to call my office, though, we can give them the exact location. It rotates among the four member communities. I believe it's at the RMLD headquarters on Ash Street in Reading.
Going down, I think.
That's it.
Thank you. Motion adjourned.
So move.
I'm sorry. Oh, yes, I did. I did. Before we do leave, I just wanted to mention the high school hockey team won the state championship, Division II, last week. And I would like to ask the town manager maybe invite them in our next meeting on April 9th. And congratulations, boys. That was a good job. You represented Wilmington well. Motion adjourned. We have one made. Second, all in favor? Unanimous?
Thank you.